All right, we call the Dalton Township meeting for order 6:00 P.M. And then if we could have Christine and I in advance, what we put in front of her.
Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for all that you do in this township. Thank you for your protection over it. Father, just give us wisdom on how to conduct this meeting for you, Lord, and give you glory in Jesus' name.
Glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then the next thing that we have is the approval of the agenda. Oh, sorry, Amy, roll call please.
I call.
Here.
Noah. Eugene.
Here.
Christie.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
There.
Here.
Amy, here.
Right, now the next thing that we have is the approval of agenda. So if we could get a motion for that, a motion to approve agenda. Motion by Noah, support by Christie. Any discussion from the board? All right, all opposed, or sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. I will get it, guys, I promise. And then we have approval of past meeting minutes. If we could get a motion for that. Motion by Eugene, support by Michael. Any discussion from the board? Right, and then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same signs. All right. That passes, and then we have the treasurer's report. Christie, if you could please present that.
What's going on? It was, if you will notice, on the consumer's CD on the second yearly 2020, we closed that in, I guess, when I opened it, and I don't know, can't explain why, but we took some money out of the water of Michigan class. So anyways, the money from that went into general fund, went back to its original spot where it belongs. So the consumers is closed, and the water Michigan class went up by the 64,000. That's why there's a big jump on the water as you get class up.
Can you explain that to me?
That could have been a typo. That probably was a typo.
It's 600,000.
Yeah, we're 40s. I will correct that. I will get that, so.
I just.
I don't think, on Michigan class sewer, I have $2,457. That is something.
No, that's probably just.
That's a typo, and I will correct that. And we'll resend out a new report within a month.
If you can pay the bills someplace.
I don't think we did. It was the interest, so the interest accidentally got plugged in under the current amount.
Okay. That makes sense. Yep, there it is. That's that number.
I put in the wrong number. I apologize for that.
Well, it should be about 663, right?
Yes, it's 662. And then the interest rate for Michigan class did go down, and stayed around 4.36.
Thank you, Christie.
Yep.
And then the next thing that we have is paying bills, which that report was given. So we just need a motion to pay bills.
Motion to pay bills.
Motion by Noah, do we have a support? Support. Support by Amy, any discussion from the board?
If I have a question. We've got 11 pages here. Is there any place that says the total amount that we spent on bills last month? I mean, do we ever get a total? I mean, we've got 11 pages of individual items, but what's the total?
I guess it does not. We can look into that for next month, maybe, and see if there's a way to put the totals on, the final grand total on it.
Yeah, it's just, it's that other page we have here, you know, that tells me how, because then I see it, you know, consistent, what's going on. Because I have no idea what a monthly set of bills really looks like.
Yeah, we can look into that for next month.
All right, okay.
So we had a motion for any other discussion from the board. All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Michael?
Yes.
Lee? Christie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. And then the next thing we have on the agenda is a fire department report, Chief, if you could.
Thank you. We way up the calls, 86 last month, and our annual services have been completed by some small things, nothing major by any means, but everything is now compliant, so we're ready to move on. We're just going to keep touching our call line as it goes. The time fluctuates for other years, it does, but no end in sight.
Right. Thank you, Chief. And we have the planning commission report. Please, if you would like to.
Information met July 29, 25, out of absence, out of head. But top of Steve, I think there's only one thing on the agenda, is PC 25-09, 47, 86 Holt Road, special land use for driving range. Site is previously occupied by Grassmire Brothers. And then there's just, talking with Steve, it's very simple, straightforward conversation, and the application was accepted and presented.
Thank you, Lee. And then the next thing is zoning board of appeals report. Noah, if you could present.
There's a public hearing, ZB 825-01, for 1232 Park Accessory Buildings. They requested two 600-foot accessory building between the principal building and Segway. Also, rejoining parcels that had been separated after much discussion, the board passed the following motion. A variance was granted to increase accessory buildings from four to six. A variance to increase from 24 square foot accessory buildings to 3,600 square foot. Permit northwest structure placement as is. Northeast structure had been removed, replaced in compliance of the ordinance. They had to combine their properties to total out 4.94 acres. And that they obtained billing and zoning permits. There were no public comments. There was no communication, no old business, but under new business, we had election of officers as follows. The chairperson remains Craig O'Nay. Vice chairperson, Nick Kunitz. Secretary David Plitt, adjourned 7/27.
Thank you, Noah. And then we have planning and zoning report. If you could do that, Steve.
In July, we had six zoning permits. That's already picked up in August quite substantially. For enforcement, we investigated 25 cases. Wrapping up a number of cases that were work without permits. We are beginning to crack down on work done without permits. So before you do anything, make sure you reach out to the township and see if you need a permit. We are at the end of the public input phase for the liquid addition sub-area plan. That survey is available online or on paper until the 20th, until the 15th. So all survey responses need to be received by the 20th or by the 15th.
Great, thank you, Steve. And then we have the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee Report, which was in your guidance staff that you got additional papers of. So if we could have, Michael do that.
We held a special meeting last Friday, August 7. We discussed, the main reason for the meeting is the twin light Christmas tree discussion. It was decided that our go forward would be that we're going to install a flagpole, and we will be discussing that further this evening. We also, one of board members suggested that we look into planting a seedling tree. Of course, that would be many, many years in the future before anybody would be able to enjoy a foreground tree, but we thought that would be a good idea as well. Points of discussion, we talked about Padley Park. The parking issue there at Padley Park, and the discussion was that we would do some more research and discuss that further in our September meeting.
Thank you, Michael. And then if we could have Justin do the maintenance and grounds report.
A couple weeks at a time, I had stone cleaning class, and just pretty awesome learning how to do that. I'm excited to see where that goes. And at fatal sports park, continuing to break on basketball and tennis courts, fixing the cracks throughout there, as well as painting the chandelier fence. And with how dry it was, able to see where sprinklers are not hidden, and replace a few of the heads there, as well as the Tronex Cemetery. Told the park, repaired some benches around basketball court, and fixed the pipes up a little bit. And play equipment that is there currently is, I've got some parts ordered for it. So hopefully they'll be fixed by next week. And instead, keeping everything maintained, transportation station did some cracks filling on the parking lot of the other deck, and transportation on the cemetery. And in this, got the irrigation finally working here at township hall, and had a request to do roads that.
All right, thank you, Justin.
Can I make a clarification? I said we met Friday, we actually met Thursday. I don't smoke or make, but just keep things accurate.
Thank you. All right, so next thing we have is public comment. The public comment is on agenda items only this first time, so if you have any public comment that you would like to make on these agenda items, you have three minutes to do so. It's best if you get up and come to the podium. If you can't, however, you may do so from your. All right, we have any public comment? Okay. Hearing nobody jumping up, we will go ahead and move forward. So I will.
Maybe I should talk about the piece that I look.
If you'd like to, yeah, let me put the timer up for you, and you can absolutely get up and do your thing. So we'll have one.
So I'm looking, I got some property on White Lake Drive. I own three sides of a piece of property that I bought years ago, and I've been researching and trying to get to be able to buy that piece of property. It's been in the state of Michigan's. It's been said it was state of Michigan property for like the last, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 years. Nobody's paid taxes on it. About a year and a half, two years ago, I finally got it to where it got on the tax roll through the state of Michigan, talking to them, and through the township here, talking to the county treasurer. And it found out that it was indeed put to some people's name. Those people passed away years and years ago. And that piece of property was then put on the tax roll, which then, of course, they can't take because they're not alive. And so that piece of property was to come up on the tax sale here a few weeks, last week, a few weeks ago. And I talked to Tony Malatziotis about three weeks ago, and he said, yeah, it's on the tax sale. He told me the story. I, before the tax sale, three or four days, I went and got the list and went to look for it. And it wasn't on the tax sale. And so I came in here to the township. I called the county. They told me that you guys scooped it up, and you're right to do so. I come in here to the township, and I put in an application to buy that piece of property. I own three sides all the way around it, as I said. Got a lot of hours into trying to buy this piece of property. I probably got seven or eight hours down in register deeds and researching and doing things with a lady down there and everything. In any case, that's the story. I'd like to buy that piece. It's, like I said, it's just right in the middle of mine. That's, I just think maybe I should say that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And if it's on the agenda, we'll get to that. I will address, address that. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, it's not major.
Probably.
Oh, yeah. Don't freak anybody out.
All right, any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward. I'm actually going to let chief kind of explain the next two, and then we'll do motion supports and roll calls and stuff for those, so.
I'd like to request that the board accept the voluntary resignation of Tucker Kubitschek from our department. He had some life changes, just can no longer support the ability to meet their requirements. So I just ask that you, as the board, accept it with regret.
Thank you.
Is there a resignation letter?
Yes, he signed a voluntary resignation letter. It's already in the board, it's in his personnel file.
Okay. So can we get a motion and a support for that?
Yep, I'm moved to approve, accept the resignation of Tucker Kubitschek from the Dalton Township, very private report. Congrats.
Hey, motion by Noah, do we have a support?
supportive.
Support by Jean. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on that. Heather?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Amy, yes. Okay, motion passes. And then, chief, if you would like to do the next one as well.
I'd like to request a conditional hire offer to Holly Johnson's probation at Fire Affairs of Dalton Township Department. She does come partially trained to move back into the area. She was recently on the EDR department until she moved back. That conditional hire will allow me to send her for a physical and then run the process. Stephen, bring it on.
All right, and then we just need a motion and a support for that as well.
So move.
By Jean.
Support.
Support by Michael. And then any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on that as well.
Noah?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes. Christie?
Yes.
Amy, yes. All right, motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, so the next thing that we have is the bid opening for the land sale that we've had set for the 2025 slash 03 land sale. This was what went in the paper. We have no bids to open, so that's kind of a, I guess we carry on with business, but I will reach out to the person who put in the request, and they just give less up there to deposit back if any according to our land sale policy, so. Right.
You know what, partially left.
It is at the end of, what is the road? Have to pull it up on here, so let me try.
It's one platted road away south of Daniels.
And it was the one that we kind of went back and forth on, which I'm gonna bring up when we go to our next thing, anyway. So we have, the next thing is the land sale request, which Mr. Marata had gotten up and talked about. I will say that while the planning commission has been trying to come up with this plan, initially I was like, it makes sense to try to help the people when they have a parcel right next to theirs. However, it has backfired now once, and also has become a very confusing process for people because they're being told that, you know, the planning commission, we have a moratorium on our land sales in that area. So I feel like we need to stick with what the planning commission had originally proposed to the board with that moratorium, and just put a hold on it. But with that being said, though, I do want to say, like, to Mr. Marata, obviously, you got up and that does make good sense. I don't think that the board's goal would ever be to sell property out from underneath of somebody, or sell like a little parcel to not the person who is adjoined to it. That would not, that would not be wise. So I think as they're going through this plan, it sounds like there might be a point where they're going to reach out to the landowners who own those properties that are smaller next to them, and inquire about them purchasing it. So it would never be like, we would never want to say, let's take this little slimmer of land and sell it to somebody else, third party, and they literally do nothing with it.
Mary, address Thomas.
I mean, yeah, sure.
Thomas.
Yeah.
If I had known that you were looking for that piece of property, I'd have voted no without buying it. Okay, yeah, I didn't know.
Well, none of us knew.
But three years in, okay, but what I'm asking you for is a little patience.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Because we have set this, we've got them working on something, and I don't want to mess up with what we're doing until we know, having heard you and knowing what you're talking about, just remind me.
Yeah. And, and the goal too was never to, so we, we've purchased the properties that were for sale in that liquid sub-area. Because it was the intent of the planning commission to, they're, they're putting forth this plan. And so we're like, well, we'll buy the ones that are. It wasn't like we wanted to snag it up and not have to get it. But it might, it might benefit people too when we do, when we did that, because you're not going into an act of bidding or against somebody else, right? Like, the plan is now to do that.
Stephen had mentioned, Scotty Hall?
What?
Scotty Hall?
Um, technically, no, but I, I, I mean, yeah, we've addressed you, so that's fine.
Stephen had mentioned something about maybe trading a little bit of property.
Yeah.
Because some of you, there's a piece of wetland behind, and I own right to that wetland.
Yeah.
And he had mentioned something to me about maybe making it right, and somehow doing the swap or trade.
Yeah, and.
And I don't know if that's still available, but.
It would be something as the planning commission goes through that, and they, they're trying to make those plans. Like, they'll advise on those types of things too, you know, like, what's the goal of it? And those types of things can definitely be discussed as it goes further. But it's definitely not a like, it's not the intent to just take it and sell it to somebody else who's, like I said, not gonna do it.
So what's this timeframe you're talking about?
That is undetermined. That is where that patience part comes in.
I'm 63 years old, and in one way or another, there's gonna be houses on that property. I would like to include your piece in it, but if not, there's gonna be houses on it.
Right.
So I'm hoping that we can get something a little sooner than later, so that I don't build all around your piece of property and it not be worth nothing but strip of woods.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think the planning commission wants to, like, throw this plan around for forever either, so it's just kind of how the process is gonna go. And we haven't even voted on it yet either, so there's still, you know, like, that just was my input on it and what I've experienced with it so far, so you kind of have to have a motion to approve or deny.
Steve? The particular piece we're talking about. When we were looking at the list, and you said these are ones that were specific to help us as our planning and all of that. Where does this piece fit in with those ones that we've got?
It is in the sub area. It's right along Whitehall Road.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, that was a whole goal, that was a whole thing. We bought the ones that were available in the sub area.
Just west of the church. The manual configuration.
White Lake Drive.
Yes, White Lake Drive.
Okay.
So White Lake Drive.
White Lake Drive.
It's west.
It's that one up there.
So if we can get a motion, we need to make a motion, so.
I have one other question for Steve. Would it mess up anything if we sold that? And what was the mental framework?
If we were to sell it, we cannot guarantee who buys it, because it is an open bid. So somebody could overbid him.
We don't have to accept that.
We don't have to accept it.
So I feel.
So limiting our options, where if you wanted to trade land, where if you wouldn't have to pay for it, you could just do a land swap as well, and it would still be on the rolls. We are, to some degree, limiting our options in selling it. And we're talking like six months is the hopeful. Because we're hoping to have a draft of the plan before the end of the year. That's, and that's a worst-case scenario of pipeline.
This piece of property literally is gonna do nothing for your plan. Because I own everything around it. I got little houses in front of it, behind it, not alongside of it, by the church, but I can put a drive on it, I can strip it off.
So at this point, like, I don't want to continue the back and forth stuff too. We do have a meeting that we need to make sure we're continuing to move, so I do want to call this for
make a motion to deny the land sale request. This is a property listed above.
A motion by Noah, do we have a support? Support by Lee. Any other discussion from the board? And Amy, if you can do a roll call vote?
Lee?
Yes.
Christie?
Heather?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Eugene? Yes.
Oh.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy, yes. All right. So moving on to the next item, we have the mechanical inspector, which has been an issue right well. So we have a letter of termination. The, so Jim Calendar, who was our mechanical inspector, did not, like, actually give a letter. He just came in and talked to Amy and I and said, hey, I'm done. And so I drafted the letter, one for our file, for his file, to have on there. Jim Calendar's been our mechanical inspector for many, many years. He's getting ready to retire. And we've already phased out the plumbing, but he's starting to do less and less municipalities, so I have that letter all drawn up. I could read it if the board so wishes me to, but unless you guys have read it already.
I make a motion to approve the later resignation of Jim Calendar?
Support. Support by Noah. And then any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on that. Noah?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy, yes. And then the next thing is to have the new contractor, so kind of just to give the board a small bit of a background, I was going into a bunch. It's been very hard for mechanical inspectors to get licensed. They have, the requirements continue to go up and up. We, I did send a letter with Steve Smith, who was our plumbing inspector, and he didn't meet the qualification by like less than a year of experience. And so, well, I sent the letter anyway, half of the board for, half of the board for, what can I think? Laura approved and half did not, and the majority said no. So it was almost split. Anyway, that being said, I have emails into Laura, two of our state reps, Senator. This is a bigger issue than just our municipality. It's countywide. All of the mechanical inspectors are getting ready to retire, and there's no one to build again. And now the licensing has become very difficult to make, to get. So, anyway, that's the fight. Right now, we have Jim Hoppus, who's willing to. Right now, we have Jim Hoppus, who's willing to step into that gap for us. Again, he is getting closer to retirement and wanting to slow down, so it's not like a long-term thing he's wanting to do. Which is why I put the letter together that just states that until he is no longer able to do so or. Another qualified candidate. We would of course end that relationship well too, but. Just that letter of intent and then the contract for mechanical inspector.
I make a motion to approve the letter of intent and contract to have two problems. As Dalton Township's mechanical inspector.
Right, motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Support.
Work by Amy, any discussion from the board?
One question on the contract.
Yes.
Page one.
Yes.
Position and duties, yeah, that is those terms of the mechanical inspector for the township. I shall cooperate with the mechanical inspector.
Yeah, that should be building. I can change that.
I, I thought that was the title that I just asked.
And there is a type along the last signature lines, because we've always had, they've always been mechanical and plumbing. And I deny remove plumbing, so I do have to fix that as well, so I will correct that. Alright, any other discussion from the board? And then. Maybe should we have, Nola, could you actually, if you, if you, can you do another motion just with the same revise? Sorry.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the letter of intent and contract to have Jim Hoppus as Dalton Township's mechanical inspector. With the position and duties that he shall cooperate with the building inspector.
Thank you, Nola, and then a support? Yep, still supports, okay, and then we had no discussion, so roll call votes.
Heather?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Alright, motion passes. Next thing, Twin Lake Christmas tree. So the Parks and Recreation Committee Advisory Committee met and they. Got quotes and kind of agreed upon the flagpole option, where there can be a flag, obviously, on the flagpole in off-season. But we could do Christmas lights on the flagpole, which would not die, which is good. For tree, but. There's different quotes in there. Justin, I don't know if it's probably, might be easier for you to explain the quotes as you've got them. And then we can kind of go from there.
So the, that was, in fact, originally was for. Let's pull it up here. Uh, one dollar, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. For the American League Tulsa Stalkin Flagpole. And it was a twenty-foot, that's a twenty-five foot. But, um. I discovered that they had the wind rating of eighty-five miles per hour. I thought that was higher when I brought this to Parks and Rec Board. And then I discovered today that was wrong. So I went and looked for a higher rating. And I came across the Martin County Flag Company. That is for eighteen hundred and nineteen dollars. And that is rated for ninety-six miles per hour winds when the flag is up. I think that's kind of the last way to go. You can see the difference in the different places that got here.
One thing that I'll bring up is. The night of our meeting last Thursday. That was a concern, the wind speed. And another concern that was that flagpole. Wanted to charge us nearly half the cost of the flagpole for shipping. Sorry, and, and comparison, Kalamazoo Flag. Is willing, or they're only gonna charge us. For what?
Hundred fifty.
Yeah, a hundred fifty dollars for. With the Christmas option, sixteen hundred, sixty-nine dollar flagpole and they're only charging us a hundred and fifty. For shipping, so that seemed logical to me.
One thing that I do want to also add is the purchase of the flagpole. The flagpole itself, I'll page him to installation. And I've also got a quote to run electric to the flagpole, so it can have light there. And that includes the light that is still, and I'll review that.
Have you looked at?
Go with the addition to eight hundred, that's what the price for the whole project.
Have you looked at solar options for lighting it?
I have solar options, like here in Apigal Field, I'm not so happy with them ones. There's, could be better ones.
They just don't seem to be very bright.
Like they don't always, it's like we are paying big amounts of money to install ours. Like crazy amounts of money. We're getting rich off Dalton Township.
Well, a decent chunk of that is the streetlights, but.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
It's something we could look into, but most likely, to get something super bright could potentially be decent cost as well, so.
Yeah, if we're gonna be running it, then most likely gonna be needed in the winter time.
Yeah.
So there's not gonna be.
Yeah, and we have already over to the Twin Lake sign too, so it's not like a huge stretch. Yeah. And then.
Current sign.
Yeah, I think we should, I think the recommendation that I would make too is to potentially just do a dollar amount. That the board is approving, because we do have emails that are gonna go out later this week to. The railroad and highway, to make sure that that is gonna be okay. At having a flagpole there. And then if they have a requirement on wind speed. For it being that close to the highway. So I think that the best bet would be to just approve a dollar amount, or we can table it to the next meeting, but then that's just holding off. A potentiality of it to get started before.
And you're removing the tree. The tree would get removed.
Sell it next.
And they're either gonna say it has to go exactly where the tree was. Or it would, it would be kind of nice to have it by this like behind the sign, but I think we asked about the tree at that point. At that same spot and we were told, no, it's too close to the road, so.
What was the cost for electric again?
Eight hundred.
Even?
Yeah.
So if we, if we went with that Kalamazoo flag for the ninety-six mile per hour flagpole, we're looking at. Twenty-six nineteen.
I, I will say that this was under the Parks Construction GL last time when we put the tree in. And there's currently twenty, almost thirty thousand actually in that, in that budget right now, so. If that helps anybody make a decision, I guess.
To approve the recognition from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Dalton Township Christmas tree. Using two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars to get that electric. That's what, that's the electric.
Okay, so the only comment I would make on that is that maybe we ought to go three thousand, just so we have a cushion. So if we have any other incidental costs, we're covered.
And then that motion for AI, so utilize up to three thousand. Yeah, because what if you want to flex your different talents?
Yeah, so we have a, a motion by Nola, do we have a support? I'll support. Support by Amy. Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Christie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Eugene?
No.
Nola?
Amy, yes.
Alright, motion passes. Alright, next thing is the public hearing for the automobile special, automobile road special assessment. The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to obviously come up and speak. It is mostly meant for people who have opposition to that road being paved. And the special assessment that is being levied on that. So if you. I will again set the three-minute timer, have people come up, introduce themselves, give their opposition. We did not get any letters or emails in opposition. So if there's any into that, we do need a motion to open the public hearing.
Also, what?
Motion by Nola, support by Michael, and the public hearing is open as of six forty. Very quiet.
I, I don't really have any opposition, but I have a couple questions, if it's okay.
Yeah, we can't, um. We might not have any answers for you, so you can get up and, and at least say your thing and then maybe the board can.
I guess, what is Mike Black, you mean, what is it? Fifty-nine, one-six automobile road, I guess my question is, is, I was, we're curious if you had a breakdown yet of the cost. I know we talked about jet fuel, maybe we'll be able to, further sign.
Yeah, it was in the roll, if the roll was in the last packet. Yeah, Christie, I don't know that I have it in. Okay, should pass that, but.
Sex, activity.
Yeah, I think so. I don't know if that sounds, let me grab that. All the way to the wire. As I figure out what page it is, I'll put it on the screen too for everybody else, because I don't.
The time, but we talked about, um, fire and road and all that. Like, some of the neighbors and I, we, we agree, we saw it maybe a good idea to incorporate some streetlights on that sectional road. And I know you guys were just talking about the cost, you know, consumers' power is built. But, uh. How do you go like through those channels, seeing about us?
Um, I can reach out to the, to Consumers Energy and see if they even have the ability to do it. That would be probably step number one, but I can definitely do that.
They work in this one right here, this period, just down in the center. I'll just pull it up in this. And it's under the second.
It's still.
Different light that way.
Whether, whether the resolution.
I'm sorry.
Sir? He had a question.
Yeah, I missed it, you live right up there, I mean, is there, is there streetlights on Whitehall Drive? I, I don't go up there.
Uh, there, uh, so just in the village, so we're south of Lakewood.
Yeah, yeah.
Right there, okay, but, uh. The village has lights, of course, only part of Lakewood.
So does Lakewood Road.
Yeah, I'm on the wrong side.
So does Lakewood Road.
It's really dark, yeah, Lakewood, Lakewood.
Lakewood has lights. Yep.
Yeah. The only light that's on automobile is my, my streetlight, my yard light.
So this is a breakdown. By what? For you guys, so that total assessment. Is, uh, the five thousand five hundred seventy-nine fifty-five, that is broken down over a period of time though, that's not assessed to you all at once. It's, so, um.
Why is the fire address on there?
You're further down, I bet. You're, you're on here somewhere, I'm sure.
No, two words, there you are, right, there's the problem.
We.
Problem is.
Yeah.
Is this a ten-year program?
Yes, and there is, so there's different, um. The township's gonna assess one set interest for you guys. The interest is gonna do this throughout that time period, but we're gonna do like, keep that level. So you guys aren't getting those high, like different fluctuations with your guys' payments every year. There is also gonna be a date that you guys can trade that in full by if you choose to, so that you're not paying any interest on it. That gets done before we even get the bond, because then we get a less bond amount. So we just don't pull that monies to, to make up, it just makes up the difference. Is in one of these resolutions, too, I think it's like September.
So because the laps are pretty much on the same side, you guys just split it up evenly, it looks like, across the board.
Yep.
There was no difference in product size, that was, yeah.
Yeah, this is good. And then, I'm trying to remember that date, but it's the. It's September fifteenth.
September fifteenth, they have it.
September fifteenth, which is like coming very quickly.
Yeah.
Um, so, I know that's kind of my deal, but that was like trying to get that bond in time to get some of the projects started this year. Which the road commission was still thinking they were at least gonna be able to do some. And then potentially finish in the spring, if not able to complete it before, before winter, so. That is the amount. Now, I guess knowing the amount, do we have anything for a public hearing, negative opposed against it?
No.
Yeah.
I, I have.
Ten years, right?
It will be split over time, and like I said, those interest rates are different, so. When we go and put in that final thing for the bond, the attorney's looking at it too, to, whatever that middle is, is what's gonna be that interest rate over that.
Be either between five and six and a half percent interest.
Yep.
We, we don't have a different number yet, but we have a date of September thirtieth for me to sign that up. To get that money.
It is, yep.
I, I would, I would also add that. If you do, if another you want streetlights, that would obviously delay the project.
Yeah, I mean, I know we don't want to do that, I didn't know there was a. Need solution to the street.
I would assume anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I can put the ask out there and we can bring it up in the next meeting, at least for the, the. It doesn't necessarily have to be a decision item, but it can be a discussion item, like, hey, this is what, you know, the information about it. Definitely we'll get it, we'll get it asked for you. So. Well, and we have all the, you know, buildings and stuff, the new home builds and stuff that are gonna go in there too, so. Look that we could definitely put in, that's all we can do, right? Most of the time, put out an ask and see what we do, so. Hi? Any other things for public hearing, anybody? Okay, so we just need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion closed. Motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Jean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, so we are closed at, oh, that glare. Six forty-eight. And now the board can review and approve, hopefully, resolutions. So the first resolution is the. Resolution number four. Um, I had to ask, I had to ask the attorney what order we did them in. So this is for the special assessment rule, payment collection of special assessments. That is that first resolution, I believe it has to.
So I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five-ish, eighteen, resolution number four.
Alright, motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Christie. Any discussion from the board?
Just, that we can just be filled in, is that just?
Yeah, it's because I know what ordering, so, yeah, so it will be filled in. Uh, we had mentioned that X is. Uh, we had mentioned the Xs that were there instead of the the thing, so that will be revised.
These were supposed to be like this.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay, so motion and support, and then any other discussion from the board? We'll do a roll call vote. Christie?
Yes. Lee?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Alright, motion passes. And then the next is for the uh actual bond itself, to be able to get the bond. So we want to approve that, so we can get a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash nineteenth.
Motion by Michael, support by Nola?
Yep.
Any discussion from the board? Alright, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on that. Michael?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Christie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yeah.
Noah?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Is that the last, are we done?
Absolutely. I need to make a rule tomorrow.
This is it for meetings, though, yes, yes. That's it, that road will will be the base, so. Okay. No, it's right. It's definitely been a learning process. Yep. Okay, so. Moving on, we're gonna go to our next um item. We had on here for more consultings, that's what I had talked about in the last meeting, um. Why am I Cindy Dodd Davis, I don't know her last name anymore, but she has worked for MTA for years and years. Um, still works for MTA, but now does her own private consulting. And she can help us with getting um our procedures and policies in order, making sure that we have all the things. Um, and also help us figure out a way to divvy up some things maybe, so we don't run into the same situation. Um, you know, the clerk's office has a ton of stuff in it. And uh, you know, say Amy worked not rerun or something where it happened because, you know, the board can, is always changing.
Right.
Um, I think if you have. Some of that divvied up in policies, procedures, some companies run, um, hopefully that will just set the township up for on some success, so. I should did put a misprint on there, cause I immediately messaged her, um. We had her total. And she put total eight hundred and eighty, but then the total said four thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
She said.
Say what?
Um, no, it, that is supposed to be a hundred and eighty, that's total.
Okay.
Forty-eight hundred.
That's not a real.
I know, no.
No, no, no.
There was a mistake.
Yeah, it was like, do you need me to change?
I was with them.
I said I already sent. So, um. So I think it would be wise for us to at least reach out to her and and help us revise her stuff and make sure we're up to date. Um. And she's got a lot of, she was a clerk and has a lot of uh other things, she's got the trustee's training uh too, so she's. Wise person.
This comes out, they swap this way, like.
Yeah, so she's gonna, yep, she's gonna review all of our, yeah, she's gonna review all of the policies and procedures, so for like past proceedings. Uh, tax, uh election stuff, you know, all of it, just to kinda make sure that everything is running out fit. So um I would think that it comes out of professional services, which we have nine thousand seven hundred and sixty. Uh, it looks like the main thing we use that for is shredding. We had added a buffer in there because we had paid um cleaner out of that same one uh last year, and so that had. Was obviously substantially higher, um, kind of in a spot where we don't have to be doing that, so. Um. Yeah, I don't think shredding is gonna cost us, uh, I'll say, so.
How long are you thinking when we would use, what's your, yeah, I mean, is this a ongoing, a one-time thing?
So she's gonna come out, uh, that's that one day, um, so she's gonna come out and then.
That's for one day.
So she's cut, so she's driving out here for one day, then she's taking the stuff and gonna review it. And then give us suggestions and recommendations on policies and interests, so.
That makes sense, she's gonna put time into it.
Yes.
I'm making motion to approve the quote for L O L consulting.
We need to put double amount in that.
It's way.
Yeah.
The amount of eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you.
Perfect.
My support.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Nola, support by Michael, any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Christie?
I'm not with that.
You can come back if she's not ready.
I don't know. Noah?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
You know, cause we had kind of reviewed some of the stuff before the audit too, and we're like, man, we hope that we're like, cause we're kinda going through, this is what we do now, and I'm like. You know, it, this would be nice to just have another set of eyes to go, hey, dummy, don't do that, that's what you're supposed to do. Hey, you're doing it so good, that would be wonderful. Um, so the the next item that we have is, I kinda added last minute, um, a panic button for in here. Uh, that quote is given by Navani because they do our panic, other panic systems, they're a security person. Um, it was in the extra stuff that was given to get off. Yeah. So he came out and checked it out, and that was the quote. Um, it would be somewhere rigged underneath, so if somebody were to come in.
And how does it do, no, by nine one one?
Yeah, immediately, I accidentally hit it when I worked at the front desk.
I did too, yes.
We.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's no uh.
They show up fast.
So, um, and I think that was coming from a place, there's other municipalities that have had people come in and act super aggressive in org meetings. Thank goodness we haven't really had that at our meetings, um, but.
What's the first thing?
Yeah, we don't wanna wait until it isn't a problem, so.
There's been threats here, you know, so it would be never enough.
Mm-hmm.
So I make a motion to approve the quote from Navani for board room's security.
Alright, motion by Nola, do we have a support? Support. Support by Amy. Any discussion? Alright, we will do a vote.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Okay, passes. And then, just the two uh things I had for discussion items, just to give you guys an update. On the Equestrian Trail property, um. The gentleman who was selling that, uh, his dad's name was also on the deed, and his dad is passing. So he is going through the process of getting it completely in his name so he can sell it. It's still happening, it just, it's slower because of the hoops he's jumping through, so. And then, I would mention uh Z B A alternate vacancy, uh, if we did appointment. To planning commission, um, the person who was on that was the Z B A alternate, so. If anybody would like to join the zoning board of appeals, that meets very rarely as an alternate.
Very rarely.
That position is open. Um.
Public?
No. So.
Anyone?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
So, so, alright, so, uh. Our final thing now is public comment again, and this can be on any, anything, so if you have public comment, like to come up and give. Comment. Are you saying that you why you have a comment?
Quick things.
Can you go up here and point out?
No.
You're so spry, you can do it, I believe in you.
Well, I went to the hospital.
Oh, no, I wouldn't say that, maybe the bad person's gonna have her now.
Two quick things. At Hope Place, we just put up a digital sign about four years ago, set back, man, it's thirty-five feet. And uh railroad is probably dead, so it ain't gonna hurt about that. Second of all, like Tom, it's chief and his crew, who came to my house, got me stable, threw me in the hospital. You know, so that's all I wanna say. Yeah, very good. It's part of it.
Yes.
Yay, thank you, Parnell.
Wake up.
Wake up.
I have a question, though. Why was that, uh, this property request denied for sale?
Um, we can talk about it after.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, yeah, I'll I'll touch base with you.
Cause I was just wondering, cause it, cause it sounds like he's got, he's got his land locked with him owning three sites of it.
Yeah.
It's just gonna, you know, once he starts building this, where you can't do nothing with your land and then.
Right.
Make yours go down in value.
It does like build a lot of pieces of property.
Yeah.
Land swap thing.
Alright, any other public comment, would you like to come up, Mrs. Fowler, or you wanna see where you're at?
I just want to announce that we have a, um, our historical museum will be open. August sixteenth from twelve to three. And the entrance is in the rear of the building.
Perfect.
Our sign is out front, you can't miss it, set corner of Fifth and Main, right across from the school.
Awesome, thank you. Great, any other public comment? I I know, I keep looking at our regional library, you got anything?
We're just sad.
Well, I'd say thank you to the three hundred and seventy-nine people who said yes. I appreciate them.
What do you mean? For the, there is, that's the vote.
Yeah, I couldn't vote.
Dalton Township did not pass the melange for the library.
Oh.
Dalton Township, but on the village.
Morgue to secret. And that's what we serve.
So what does that mean?
Well, it's.
She spilled it.
Articulate just in in that, where the library is, Rose is due, didn't support it.
Alright, any other public comment? We just need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, support.
More, motion by Nola, support by Christie, all in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Any opposed, same sign. Alright. The adjourn is seven oh two.